Is there anyone here tonight who hasn't been to our meetings before? We usually start with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll ask you to rise for that.
May we be loyal to the word of God in guiding us in the decisions we are about to embark upon? Amen.
Amen.
With Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Court, would you please call the rules?
Kramer.
Russell.
Farmer.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
Pinkston.
Here.
Cruz.
Mrs. Rook is not able to be with us this evening. Is there a motion to excuse her?
I'll make the motion to excuse Mrs. Rook.
She has personal business that prevents her from being here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Any speaking to the motion? Oh, if you have a say yes?
Yes.
And you opposed, say no? She's excused. We'll be on to our business for this evening. Motion to excuse, the minutes are the last meeting, July 8th, 2019. Let's see, a chance to be three more minutes in space then. And, um... Would you make that motion, please, Mr. Kramer?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, I move... I believe the City... Swartz Creek City Council approved amendments at the regular council meeting held Monday, July 8th, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Are there any additional corrections to be made for the minutes? I guess they look good to all of us. Madam Court, would you call the rule?
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next on business to accept the agenda for tonight. Mr. Zellweger, anything to add to the agenda? Any changes to it?
Not the agenda, but to the communications. We've got an audit prep letter from Plant Moran that I distributed, as well as the updated descriptions for what's called through a townhome site that includes the exclusion of the ceremonial bit from sale. It was part of the site plan and agreeable. It had to be updated in some of the newer work you had.
All right, if you'd like to speak to those things either during your city manager's report or else as we get to the business on those items, that'll be fine. So we have a motion. No, we don't have a motion yet, Mr. Zellweger. Farmer, would you make the motion to accept the agenda?
I move the Swartz Creek City Council approve the agenda as printed for the regular council meeting of July 22nd, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any speaking to that motion? Madam Burke, would you call the motion, please?
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next on business is the city manager's report. Mrs. Hicks, would you read that motion?
I move the Swartz Creek City Council accept the city manager's report of July 22nd, 2019, including reports and communications to be circulated and placed on file.
Second. It's a federal.
Motion's made and seconded. Any speaking to the city manager's report? Questions or comments? There's a lot of information in there this time. Does not look like anyone has any questions or comments, so... Madam Court, please call the rule.
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next on business is the rest of the reports that were in our package, communications. Any question or comments on any of those things that did not have to do with businesses coming up today? Tonight's business will save any comments or questions until we get to it. Does not look like anyone has any. Will that open the meeting to the public? If any of you here would like to address the council on anything, please go. Post the podium, tell us who you are, where you live, and what time of my hour.
My name is Betty Bonder and I live at 879 West Grove Road. And the newsletter that came out, and Mary, you were talking about recycling, and I talk about that now?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Is there any way that we can have Republic put out another brochure? Because there's things that are not... That they don't take, that were not on your list. And if you go online, you get several different ideas of what it is you're supposed to recycle. Now, it used to be... Things change. It used to be anything that had a "two" on it, they would take. And as in shopping bags, grocery bags. And now we're saying that they don't take any of those bags. Now, if I'm confused about what I'm supposed to recycle, we're not paying to get... Other people must be confused also. And so, you know, is there any way that we can have Republic put out something? Because we went online and we looked at that and it'll say that they're taking aerosol cans. And then we go down further and it says, "No, they're not." And there's another one that says they're taking milk cartons. Well, milk cartons, in my estimation, are the waxed cartons. And they don't take those or they never have. But it doesn't mention those. You know, they take milk jugs, but not milk cartons. Is there any way we can contact them?
I think that we have someone who can contact them, right, Mr. Zellweger?
Yes, we just got a new... Some new guidance from Republic since the newsletter went out.
Okay.
Recycling's a bit dynamic because prices change.
Right.
As well as processes. And they have, like Styrofoam, for example, is something that they don't all the time they used to. And so, we have new guidance and it is in a publication they distributed that we can distribute among the community. Do you have it on the webpage, direct? Checking right now. So, some items have changed in terms of what they can process or how they want to prepare. And all we can do is try to stay in today. So we tried to get ahead of it with that newsletter and then I think within a week they changed it again.
They changed it again? Well, I...
And it's not... It's understandable, again, there's a commodity market for recyclables and it's pretty unpredictable.
And people go out of business and they don't want to take it anymore. I make crocheted mats for the homeless out of shopping bags. So I cut the top and the bottom off and cut it into four strips and then crochet it together.
Mrs. Bonder, could you talk into the microphone? If someone in the back there says he can't hear you...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anyway, I make these pads and I wondered, you know, I've been putting them into my recycle because it used to be that you could recycle them, but evidently you cannot. So we need some clarification.
We can provide it.
Okay, so it would be on the website?
Yes.
Or you'll send out a brochure or something?
We'll update the webpage and then we'll look to get information distributed in the next newsletter or so if we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, Betty. The reason they don't want the shopping bags is because that stuff goes down a conveyor and they sort it out and it wraps around all of it.
Right, right. And I...
And you gotta stop and cut it off.
And I didn't like putting it in there. And when they dump it into the trash or into the recycle thing, the wind blows and then it blows all over. So I didn't like to cut up ones either. So anyway, I just thought, I think that we need some clarification.
They do take paper shopping bags, so if you get paper bags at the store, you can use that.
Right, so we won't... To... Thank you.
There might be some chance possibly that Madam... Some information could make it into the view newsletter too. Right? Perhaps, maybe? Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Mark Philsec, 5272 Bertrast Drive. And I'm here to just make a couple of quick comments about the development of townhouses along the road here. I also have a big interest in the veteran park. I helped raise a lot of our funds for it plus our post here. I just think it's kind of a rush into something, it's a green space that I think we might wish we'd never... You had never developed, similar to, you know, Green Park in downtown London or Central Park or something. Once it's gone, it's gone. And I'm sure a lot of people want to develop Central Park in the day. And I just don't think that the reward of taxes, which I don't know what's the time limit they'll put with how long it would take to make back the extra money that you're using to, you know, giving to the developer. I just don't think it's worthwhile to do that. Initiative options should be saved. It's just a wonderful green space, parking for everything. I just... I think this down the road, we'll wish we had it for a better use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty, my name is Julia Assner. I live at 6287 West Maple Road in Swartz Creek. I'm actually part of the city. But I get a concern about the Aurora project that you're talking about, building and all that green space, you know. Looking at it, it doesn't look like there's actually enough room to put this many units. And I was concerned about the fire department, you know, and all these houses there. And would it cause a problem, you know, with all these, you know, residents and everything? How are they going to do the parking for the residents? Will they have driveways planned or are they going to have the road? Just what were they planning?
Yes, they do have... Parking's going to be in from the rear of the different apartment buildings. There's going to be a road going around behind them that's going to be garage just for two cars for each unit. And a driveway into that garage.
And like I said, I was thinking about the fire department, you know. But this, you know, it sounds like it could cause a problem, you know. The firemen have to get out, they've got a run to do, and you've got all this building there.
And that's all been cleared by the fire department. Check it out.
Also, this is a commercial, you know, this is a commercial area, you know, the bank, the post office, the veterans, and the cemetery and everything. The house is residential, is that going to fit into this plan of all the businesses?
Well, before it became a green space, there were two homes there. And the city acquired that and we had to tear them down because they were dilapidated and not able to be saved. So part of the cost of this was clearing down the homes that were on there before we got those properties. So it was residential originally.
So how are they going to work that now? Have part of it residential, the rest of it's business or...?
This side of the street will be business. The other side of the street is residential.
And then we have the staterooms and they have the ceremonies. And you have people, you know, where are they going to park and how are they going to handle that?
We have the lot between the post office and the cemetery belongs to the city. We already explored turning man into a parking lot. And that will provide us quite adequate parking for anyone that should come there to visit. And I think also parking for people that are visiting to the Veterans Memorial on Memorial Day and other occasions.
And when they have big functions like hometown days, do they have things figured out for that, you know, where people will be at and how they're going to accommodate? I know they had the car show over there, so do they have accommodations for those types of things?
Looking into those things too. Thank you. Yes, it's not that... We've been working on this for about four years already in planning. So, just everything you thought of, yes, been quite thoroughly researched.
I know this is exactly... I go up that area quite often and frankly, I love the green space. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric Jameson, 5015, 517, 848 Miller. Or Holland, 517, 5015. You gotta know where I live. Just to speak on the townhome project, we've seen how many years of this has been into this. And I actually respect quite a bit that we've had such a turnout on this... On this topic or this project. That means we're doing something right. We're doing a high-profile project in Swartz Creek. And that's one of the things that I think we need. We need something that kind of breaks off that rust a little bit of what we've had for a while. And I've heard all of the pros and the cons and both sides of that argument. And there's no doubt that it's not changed from what it is. But being a downtown property owner and a business owner and a resident in Swartz Creek area, that is something that I think everybody is the master plan and everybody else is trying to move forward with. I know it's upsetting at first, but we have an opportunity, in my opinion, we have an opportunity. We have a developer that's willing to take a gamble on this, which is where every other community similar to us is going to these mixed-use spaces. This missing middle residential. The concerns about residential and commercial all in the same area, that's how everything is going now. That's what every city that is revamping and trying to keep the downward... Their downward spiral, they're trying to catch that, is what we do. That's just the way that things are now. People prefer to live in those mixed-use areas. So as far as all of the other arguments go, from the 30,000-foot view from a business owner and a resident, this is a great opportunity, in my opinion, for the city. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take this. I understand there are complications with how that space is used now, but I think that everybody involved is more than willing to accommodate those concerns and maybe even improve a little bit on the way that that... Or the needs that will be gone if we develop that property, which was originally meant to be developed anyway. But I think we can make a better parking area or better arrangements than using that flooded-out lot when it rains down there. I think that's my opinion as a business owner, resident, and as a quite the investment in Swartz Creek myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question.
You've got something else, all right? You may return.
Because the gentleman probably wants the lot flooded out and how's that going to work with the housing if you have a flooded green?
I don't think he's talking about that.
Oh, he's not talking about that.
It was a different lot that was flooded out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Also, I'm going to ask you about the site plans. Do they have a site plan in order for this all drawn up?
Yes, the site plan has been drawn up. It passed by the planning commission and passed by the city council.
Okay, good.
Mira, can I make your comment?
After me.
Huh? Okay.
Okay.
You're probably going to say, "Well, I am."
Possibly, and then you won't have to talk.
Okay.
If you visit some of the older communities, I'm Genesee County and around the state and pretty much any state, you'll find that a lot of older cities have a downtown area that has business on the first floor of buildings and residences on the second and maybe third floor. That's very, very common. In fact, that's coming back in the city of Flint now very much. So that is something that we'd like to see developed in Swartz Creek too. They have a first-floor business and a second floor and possibly even a third floor for residential housing so that you have people living in your downtown area. That keeps businesses operating at night as well as during the daytime. Otherwise, very often, 5:00, 6:00 in the afternoon, then downtown dies and there's no way around it anywhere ever after that. So if they live there, they're going to be shopping there and partying there and do another thing in that downtown area. So that is something that is well-time tested, over 100 years, that's been the case in most cities. It's being promoted more and more now in cities throughout the state and throughout the country. And it's just a wise idea. So this is an idea, because we don't have a lot of buildings downtown that have second, third floors for residences, how do we get people to move to the downtown area? Because this is one of the reasons that we're looking at this, is get some housing for people in the downtown area. And that is part of the downtown area in Swartz Creek. Now, Dr. Beaston, anything else?
When this first came up, I was on the planning commission. I attended most of the DDA meetings and I don't know how many public meetings I had with input from the community to discuss this and see the best use of the property. Over a total of the last five years, I've probably attended 30 or 40 meetings on this. And I don't understand why, when this was opened to the public and had a chance to have an input in it and discuss it, nobody showed up. Now, all of a sudden, it's like a catastrophe that we've spent all this time and energy discussing this and now, you know, it's just too bad that this didn't happen before. I think if the people that are against this had been at all the meetings and understood the whole impact of this program and what it means in Swartz Creek, I don't think there'd be as much complaining as what we're hearing now. That's it.
Thank you. It was brought up a couple of minutes ago by someone that thought that we should have a public vote on this and a public vote on other major things in the city. I don't believe that the person who suggested that understands that it costs about $10,000 to hold the election. And if we were to hold the election every time, we had to make a decision and charge the citizens $10,000 every single time so that they could say no if they wanted to, they would simply vote all of us up here in the council, all of us, because we're not doing our job. They liked us to make these decisions.
Yeah, well, here's part of the thing. Okay, for those two lots, we paid $210,000. Okay, we have one builder that's willing to do this. And we're going to sell it to him for $10,000. Well, I can't see where that even makes sense because that property is worth more like it is right now. You can't tell me that that's good business, paying that much money for that property and then selling it for $10,000. I mean, we're giving away $200,000. I just can't believe you people actually think this is a great idea.
You couldn't get $200,000 for that property? You couldn't get $20,000?
Why didn't we buy it then?
It was different when we bought it.
Well, I'll tell you what. I think you could get more than $10,000 out of it if you did sell it.
Well, this discussion, I think, was better wait till we have to cover the topic.
I will, I will. Okay.
Steve Schenker, 7446 Country Metal Drive. Well, most of those meetings on the project occurred, yes, at the DDA and planning commission. You know, if you're working downtown and planning, that's a scramble. Get here, eat, get here, here's your city council meeting, this is 7:00. And that's a little bit easier to get to. But all it's been presented is in concept to the city council. And then all of a sudden, until, well, for voting on it, whether to sign up with the property though. And for one city council, I would say, "Well, it's going to end." But then you've been elected, the people on the DDA and the planning commission are not elected. You're supposed to have the final say on that behalf, not because some bureaucratic commission or board has given some authority. As far as the reimbursement brought up by the gentleman, what the cost of the property, obviously some of the costs is that there was a building on there and he had some sort of value for that and that was torn out. But still, to say the property's worth $10,000 or whatever, or even to make back the $100,000, it's... The money's not going back to the general fund. We want to make, "Oh, we're going to get the money back in three years." But it's the general fund that purchased it. All increase in millages except... Well, they exempted some, but those were special millages, so now the increases are coming back to the general fund until the DDA is wound up. Well, of course, then they own... They're borrowing a bunch of money. They're saying, "Well, we're not really doing anything." But we're doing streetscaping on Miller Road. We have grants out for places to improve their buildings. And if it's so imperative, why are we demanding that new, you know, anybody that overhauls a building, they have to put a second story on it in the downtown and rent out? I mean, but then as I understand it, they threw an extra story on the old... You'll read the Center Point building. And that kind of has an uneven floor. I mean, you know, you're... You want it, but what money you get in that area? The, you know, adding additional floors. And if this is... You're saying this is a larger area and you had more, you know, people coming downtown, well, then you go down... You say downtown into Jan's Bar, there's 100... I'm not like number 292 in the first section of condos there in Springbrook. So there's over 100 up front that are downtown. And are they... You see a whole bunch of people streaming out, walking around downtown? Not a whole lot, I mean... And we're going to get more. We got 20 more houses coming in Apple Creek that are similar housing, but they're going to be rented. So I don't see where... You're saying we're not doing anything, but they're streetscaping. We got more coming downtown. Well, some people do even want from the Apple Creek station. I see some people that do. I don't know, there's just a lot, I think, a lot of condos and already the stuff in the city.
Is there anyone else?
Jason Keane, 5260 Bertrast.
I think you need to speak more directly into the mic.
Jason Keane, 5260 Bertrast, 5260. I may be late to party, but was there a study done as far as supply and demand how the downtown area?
Yes, Hannah Sneakin out, we did a housing study.
So was Hannah funded and studied?
Yes.
Was that on the website or...?
If it's not, we can put it there. It was just...
So everyone can see.
Part of the reasoning why the DDA chose this type of housing in this location.
And at that price point?
Price point, I think, is outdated, but the idea was family-type housing.
And this is the rendering public?
That is not the rendering. That is for Apple Creek Station.
Okay.
Renderings are online and then the site plan package from planning commission, as well as council package tonight, which is online. Roughly available, anybody can take, as happens. Anybody can take my information, mobile phone, email, communicate about this if you have that.
Okay. Just for what it's worth, I am against it. Just, I feel like it's not the highest and best use of the space. I mentioned best use, and I believe Mr. Jameson as well. I think a commercial setting personally with maybe some residents above would be a better use.
Thank you. Just for your information, the buildings are proposed across the street look very different than those.
So that was my concern.
Yeah, because you can see those city...
If I'm looking in, I can watch the word.
Okay. Mixed use was considered when the workshops, the community-wide workshops were first occurring as to how municipal property could be used towards improving downtown. And ultimately, it was thought that the mixed use or commercial use would be best on Miller and Morris exclusively. That's the reasoning. And that on a side street or in the periphery of downtown, housing would be more appropriate. So it's been thought about, right or wrong? That was the reasoning as to why it wasn't pursued. So it's been thought about, right or wrong, that was the reasoning as to why it wasn't pursued.
Anyone else?
Yes. My name is Charlie Burnett, six three twenty-nine, Dustin Street. And I'm concerned about this over here. I heard it say that this has been in the works for four or five years this time. But that war memorial has been, in fact, for about nine or ten years now. You've been there, you've been several different times, I've seen you there. You've seen the crowd that gets there. I'm not sure you were there when it was going on, when the fire trucks come out with their screaming with their white, with their sirens. People living there were going to get sirens every time a fire truck comes out. And you're high in the sky thinking about the city being, the city ain't never going to come back. Fourteen years can't compete with Myers and Coors. And that Mr. Pickle side there, that just, you're a piece of gelatin every time I see that thing. The hot plan, the building, four hundred thousand a month on that thing? They're not going to do that. It's a nice concept, but I think it'll work. But it's a shame to ruin that beautiful war memorial by putting them buildings over there. I think it was about, maybe fifteen years ago, maybe twenty years ago, up across from, what's that street? Goes down towards the high school.
Airchild?
Airchild.
Artchild. Across street from it, they brought them down, they backed up to the condo, up to the ridge track. And I sat here, when they were talking about that, and they guaranteed that was not going to be something nice housing. But it's exactly what it is. It's exactly what that's going to end up being too. And from the center of the road end is what, thirty feet right away? You got, you put a brand new sidewalk in there, all new curves, building there, that's all going to get tore out of there. Putting cement trucks, a lot of stuff over all that sidewalk that's gone. We're going to pay to put sidewalks back in? You know, what? And first I heard about partners going in there or condos going in there probably two months ago. I didn't see anything in the view, if I seen it in the view, I didn't, was it ever in the view? And you know, who stayed when that comes out here?
I believe it was.
A lot.
A lot?
A lot, a lot. A lot.
A lot? Did you ever describe what it was going to be?
What?
I don't know if you ever described what it was going to be, but I, I just, God, you don't want to ruin that beautiful war memorial. When you come in that road there, you see all that green, looking at that fire station now, the face station, looks beautiful, you got that all taken care of, looking nice. The front entrance of the civic center here looks nice. And you don't throw condos on there. Where are the kids going to play? At the war memorial? You don't show the kids going to play, I think, the kids, that going to be the playground? Climb around the statues? I just think it's a bad mistake and I'm disappointed. I had put on Facebook about this and I talked to guys at the American Legion, I talked to them at the BMW. And I know four people here, five people here from the American Legion and nobody from the BMW. American Legion people here are in this. And a lot of work been in that war memorial. I was one of them, did some work on that there. I just hate to see it go for this, my opinion, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm going to talk to about the only chairs in the road there. And how do they plan to run, right, take that people into?
Would you mention your name again because?
Julia Nasslin.
Okay, thank you. We have you do that each time you come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because someone else transcribes what's said and they can't see who, they're not here.
Okay. So I was wondering, how are they going to handle the traffic? Because a lot of people go through there, you know, doing the different businesses and everything, seeing the memorial and everything. How do they propose, they got all this equipment in there, how are they going to handle the road? And how are people going to afford to join anything? Do they have that plan?
This Q and A session is probably more appropriate for the business item on the agenda when a purchaser developer can speak to those questions. Every intention of answering and transparency is great, this public comment session is very much turning into a Q and A. Because it goes beyond the scope of what it's intended to do.
And also, about pricing, they're how about two hundred twenty, two hundred forty thousand dollars a unit? Did they do a study on pricing of these units? I mean, how do they write that to two twenty to two forty thousand?
I can't answer it.
Valverde could probably speak to that.
Builders are pretty confident that's what they can get for the units.
But there's been a lot of businesses around here that you don't see hate like that. And also, I'm just wondering how they can justify that or reach that benefit.
That's kind of a newer niche style housing with a niche audience that, and an extremely limited market of houses in this area. It draws, I know people who have looked for homes in the downtown area of similar style that have had to move to other communities that have recently developed. And these builders have recently developed housing in that same style in other communities.
Usually, when they have a house of that price, there's a lot of business opportunities and jobs available. In Swartz Creek, there's not really a lot of jobs.
Well, there's a tremendous amount of business opportunity with fantastic access to the highway that leads to many other job opportunities. And this gives the balance of access to the highway with access to downtown.
And a lot will be driving quite a distance to get to from your house to the side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we start our business discussion? We'll have one more chance for you to address the council after we finish our business. I think to say those before we started, this is your last chance. Okay, we'll move on to our conversations soon. First, I'm a business in Mott Community College, going to have a presentation for us.
I can build a very tree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Steve.
First, let me introduce myself. My name is Larry Gofford, I am the chief financial officer of Mott Community College. I want to thank the mayor and council for allowing me to come, what I wanted to do tonight. I don't think we get the opportunity, we haven't done this for the entire, I'm at the college since two thousand and seven. And we'll go every so often and speak to different municipalities, we have public hearings, we've touched our forums, etc. And we haven't done that lately, so we're wanting to go and kind of give an update. Almost went into college, we started a new strategic plan. And so I promise I will make this not very long. The other slide deck there, I'm not going to go through the entire thing. I'll probably go through ten or twelve pages of it, but if you have any questions in the interim, I'll listen to it. So the mission of the college is to provide high quality, successful, affordable education opportunity and services that cultivate student success and individual development and improve the overall quality of the public and cultural, multicultural. A little bit about the college, number wise, there are ten thousand five hundred and four credit students. There are seventeen hundred thirty-two nine credit students. And just for FYI, Sports Creek, Sports Creek schools has three point nine percent updated enrollment in some eighteen, I think. There's a fifth public school, actually behind Ramblin' Davis and Flint, our, our current school. Nearly a hundred degree and certificate programs. We have both campus in Flint and in five satellite locations, Clive, Ben, Howell, Pierre and Lasso. And then we also have a workforce and network development division located downtown Flint. The college has been recognized nationally as one of the top one hundred and fifty community colleges in the country. In two thousand and eleven, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, in two thousand and eleven, it was ranked, it was in one of the top ten county colleges in the country. And that's ranking two thousand county colleges, a significant achievement. On the state level, we've been recognized as well. On local level, Flint, Flint just the Chamber of Commerce awarded the Apple Cafe as the art of achievement award restaurant of the year. And I'm going to speak a little bit about culinary building as well and give you some updates on that. So the college has about a seventy-four million dollar budget, forty-four percent in tuition, twenty-six in property tax, there's twenty-six in state operations. We rely on what is a three-legged stool if you were for funding. The property taxes, as you well know, haven't been there since two thousand and ten. And the college has also a twenty million dollar account funded today on that. So we've had to make budget cuts and also increase tuition a little more than we were. Economic impact, there's a study that's done, we've done for three years. MCC, according to the study, adds four hundred thirty-nine point seven million in income to the Genesee County economy. The income, the impact supports sixty-eight hundred and six jobs in the county. And for every one dollar public money spent, taxpayer receive two ninety in return. So a couple of exciting things going on for our construction. I hope you all know about Culinary Building downtown Flint. It opened, we had a grand opening on June seventh. Was very well received, we had a lot of people there, it was a very hot day, but we made it work. The culinary building, I need everybody to understand that it's not a restaurant that's in competition with downtown. It's an academic building. The whole purpose of this building is to leverage what is a demand program right now, culinary, in the state that we are. Our current facilities that we had on the main canvas and the front building couldn't sustain this. We're hoping that within seven years, we'll double and possibly triple the increment we have. So that will be our barometer of success, not on how many lunch presenters we serve down there, one twenty makes. Also, the college purchased historic Woodside Church, I'm not sure if you know where that is, but on Court Street adjacent. And it's turning into the Lenore Crowdy Family Life Center. Oh, let me go back to the culinary, forgot this part, I think it's important. The funding for this came from four different areas. The college put in through taxpayer, motivated bonds. The state of Michigan put in through MEDC. There was a new market tax credit that was utilized to help off that cost. And then the Charles Ford Mott Foundation also put in three million dollars, actually, three million plus a building. On the Lenore Crowdy Family Life Center, she has Mott Foundation is also putting in three million dollars for this as well, for this rehabilitation. So the college is constantly looking for other partners to help leverage these costs. Other renovations, the Southern Lights branch, which is on the path to Roman Benton. It's going, under going eight, going down renovation right now. That was old, somewhere's energy building that was acquired, carried a little bit of done to it. And it's also technology behind it. And also, it's not the best use or the best, I guess, layout for what we want to do with that type of program. The LURDA programs down there will, as well, along with regional training center. So we have that at the college as well. So this leads me to the final part, the strategic plan. Under the president, we've been this four years, now this is your fifth year. Question with this, where do we want to be in two thousand and twenty-one? And this guided this strategic planning process that we did discussing. So the highlights, there are three Cs that are commitments, commitment to student employee success, stability, mutual respect, compliance with legal safety and physical obligations. From that, there are institutional priorities as well, there are six. And I'll just go to the very top level, there are more details behind it if you'd like to read that. And if you would like to have this presentation sent to you, email please, I'd be more happy to send it to you. I didn't want to print up all these copies. But the priorities are diversity, equity, inclusion, a committed employee culture, a student-centered environment, stewardship, stewardship and sustainability, compliance and workforce collaborations and partnerships. So that is all I have. I also wanted to thank you for your support and for allowing me to come to the evening. And I will answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Mary, have a question. May.
Yes. We have an atrocious skills gap in this country. It's a growing, living problem. How does Mott New to College plan to address this problem gap with skill trades and the gap that is in our society twenty nineteen?
That's a fantastic question. So the skill staff, it comes more than once, part, we have a workforce education where we're trying to do skill as far as trades and the job training versus just a general education program. We're constantly looking at other program certificates or two-year degree programs that we can use. Also, the college president, extremely, has made this comment more than once, is that we want to be able to make a commitment as well that when we educate somebody for a certain program or certain, I guess, job, that they will come out with a basic set of skills. So oftentimes, I think, when people are going to a higher education program, they come out and there are certain skills that they're missing. It's a very difficult thing to do, it's a very hard, much hard to do. And another thing with the college, it being a community college, I think everybody knows that it's open enrollment. So everybody gets that. There is no selection process, there is no cutoff, GPAs, SAT scores. So we take everybody, which makes the job a little more difficult to do. But it's a very big question, is it a definite concern that we have as well? Thank you.
Thank you. I graduated from there in nineteen sixty, one of those don't pass through your college and see us out of walk around the buildings. But I transferred to Michigan State, every credit transfer and I gained a couple. So it's a great buy and great college.
Thank you. And the state is actually working, it's a awful battle with everybody's territorial protection with higher with four years versus community colleges. You know, there's some, some four-year program community colleges that a lot of do now. One that can't is nursing, that's what everybody wanted, but it was just a fight of four years. But the state is working with the community colleges to make sure that the first forty-five credits are taken and a community college has to transfer in to any four-year program. So that's, I think that's a significant work that goes on as well.
My wife graduated from Mott College in a nursing program. The year that she graduated, one of the graduates from Mott scored the highest in the state on a nursing exam to get their license from the state. So good evidence that it's quality education.
Very highly regarded, that is the one program that's not just a way to list anywhere. That is actually competitive, that had to be competitive because of the mom and people who were getting it. But the whole medical program profession is going away from LPS or they want the patch or RS, which is going to take community colleges kind of out of it.
Yes.
One little good story. My daughter started, went to Mott for two years and went to Kettering. And she had a, it was a great preparation for her to finish up her engineering degree at Kettering. They were very, very close with transferring credits and all that, so they really wanted to.
And I did want to share with you too, is that a lot of times, Mott Community College gets cubby old or defined as a Flint college, you know, it's in Flint or Flint students or Flint residents. And I just listed to you the top five schools that are high schools, and they're not in Flint. Well, Carmine's, I guess, could be part, part of it. Ramblin' Davis and Carmine's with Clive. I'll take the middle college up Sports Creek, Flushing currently. And there's your first Flint school, Flint Southwestern. So it's not, it's becoming much more, you know, there's a substantial amount of students. I think it's the number one, one of those, the number one choice of higher education for all schools, colleges.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, appreciate all that you do for our communities.
Thank you.
Next item of news is the eight thousand two Miller lease, that is the auto shop on the corner of Moore and Lynch, and leave that to over to turn to you.
Whereas the city has acquired a commercial structure located at eight zero zero two Miller Road, parcel ID fifty-eight dash thirty-five dash five seven six dash oh four nine. There's undergoing repairs and improvement, and whereas the structure is occupied by an existing business that leases a bottom floor for retail space, and whereas the upper floor will soon be ready for residential occupancy, and whereas the retail tenant intends to continue to occupy the retail space, seeks to occupy the residential space and purchase the property after all improvements are finalized, and whereas the city recognizes that investment dollars may be recovered from the sale of this property, but additional proceeds may not be recovered for in-place tax foreclosure regulations. Now be resolved, Schwartz Creek City Council hereby approves and restates the lease agreement with Lasers Flowers and Gifts LLC as included in the City Council package of July twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. Be it further resolved, the City Council directs the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and further directs the treasurer to account for any proceeds from rents collected along and with any future sales proceeds of the property.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second. This is one of the properties that we picked up from the county, it has mansions in the mansion, it was seized by the county for bad taxes, that one pain, and the county allows local communities to pick that up first before they put it on the open market. We decided to pick it up and do the repairs necessary to make it a first-class building that we could sell, which is the intent, and actually we have a sale document pending in this, this frame now. Part of renting it out for the person who's going to buy it, they only live on the second floor, which has just been remodeled, and as soon as we finish remodeling the first floor also, then we leave it that down, the purchases going to go through as planned at least?
Yes.
And the mansions, we are not, as a city, allowed to make any money on anything like this because we got it from the county. So any money that we make over the money that we put into it, we have to turn back to the county, and it goes into the property rehabilitation fund. Speaking of the motion.
How much rent do we get?
That was in the motion, it's, I think, eight hundred dollars, right now it's going to be twelve hundred dollars when they finish it on. Is that right?
Yes, eight hundred for the retail space rent currently, which is what it was as we acquired, so the previous landlord was charging eight hundred a month, we continued that. The upstairs rent would be set at eight hundred a month, they're both gross leases, meaning that the occupied paid its all utilities, and the downstairs rent would be increased from eight hundred a month to twelve hundred a month upon completion of the renovations.
So short answer is, we'll get sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, but you said it was in the resolution, I don't see that.
It's in the agreement, not the resolution.
Yeah.
Fifty, and oh, eighty-four.
That's in the package, throw it down.
I have a question.
Okay.
Oh.
Even that microphone, you don't keep them on?
Tonight, not tonight. Page fifty-four to fifty-five, according to the agreement, there's landlord pays for sidewalks, no removal. Right? And the reason why I ask this is because the tenant asked me one day when I was conducting business in there about having the city help off with stone removal on a sidewalk one wintering morning, or afternoon, I should say. My question is, that's the responsibility of the city to maintain sidewalks here during the winter time?
We maintain them, our agreement has been they clear them. So if there's, if there's a defect or a debris, we would clear it, but winter time maintenance has been the responsibility of the occupant.
Okay.
In practice, I expect we'll have this transferred on or about the time of the snow.
Is that right? That thought was that landlord pays for stone removal?
The city does not take responsibility for snow removal on any private property other than when residents do not shovel their snow for forty-eight hours, and then we'll have the company coming to clear it, and we'll charge them for doing that.
Let's clear it up.
Anyone else? Madam Cook, I believe we are ready to vote on the resolution.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Kreeger.
Next, Bikes on the Bricks.
Mr. Biggeston.
Me. Whereas the city owns and operates and maintains public streets and the corresponding redways, and whereas Bikes on the Bricks, Inc. group is proposing a police escorted ride from Genesee County, including numerous, numerous local municipalities on September seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the Genesee County Road Commission is coordinating the route and permit requirements. Now be it resolved, the Bikes on the Bricks, Inc. hereby authorized to make application to the Genesee County Road Commission on behalf of the city of Schwartz Creek in the county of Genesee, Michigan, for the necessary permits to allow police escorted ride on Elm's Road on September seventh, two thousand and nineteen, at approximately ten AM to one PM within the right-of-way of the city of Schwartz Creek, and the city of Schwartz Creek will faithfully fulfill all permit requirements and will indemnify and save harmless all persons from claims of any kind arising out of operations, authorities, by such permits as, as are issued. Be it further resolved, the City Council otherwise permits the Bikes on the Bricks group to conduct a police escorted ride as indicated above under the direction of the Chief of Police and Screen Administrator.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. I have one question on this. We used to have a group called Rolling Thunder that had a similar ride through here. Is this a successor group to them, or the same group with a different name?
I don't know the answer to that. Do you have a history? I don't know. I don't.
Anybody?
It's, it's not the same group.
Not the same group?
Rolling Thunders is usually veterans.
Okay.
That they go, just now, Washington DC stuff, or if a high-risky members died, this is a little, anybody that's got a bike.
This is overall, please talk.
And the second question I have is police escort, do we know when the police department is providing an escort? Are we doing that, excuse me?
No, sir. That's through the state police in the Sheriff's Department, I believe, according to that.
All right. Other questions?
All right, over here.
Comments? Yes, sir, Mr. President.
One, it says, will indemnify and save harmless all persons from claims of every kind. Is that by meaning we're going to allow it but not be responsible for if there were an accident or something? Beat the bottom of page twenty into twenty-one in the motion.
Yeah, so I think what we're getting at is we're, we're enabling them to be the authorized agency to review this because it's a county-wide endeavor, and so if somebody had a claim that we wouldn't hold the county responsible as a permitting agency for some sort of defect in their review, that's the way I read it. It's just, so we're giving them the authority to review it.
I'm sure they, they.
But still. They're not going to want local screen authority liability.
Anywhere else? I believe we're ready to vote.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Kreeger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is the big topic tonight, the winner, Tom, on the table. And we're, Mr. Kramer, to read the question I have.
My, uh, whereas the city owns two lots of the Super Lots of Spot located down the northwest corner of Morris Road, Palfortino Drive, PIT numbers five eight three five five seven six, tax zero zero one, and five eight three five five seven six, tax zero zero two, and whereas the community has been engaged in finding a preferred option for the permanent use of these parcels, and whereas the Downtown Development Authority, working with the public and other city commission and staff, find that downtown housing is a peaceful use that would further the vision of a small community vibrant downtown, and whereas the DVA, Downtown Development Authority, conceived and planned for the use of the site with the help of a professional architect, has subsequently invited developers to proceed with partnering, partnering in the development of the site, and whereas RBF Construction presented themselves as the only local developer with capacity and a desire to meet the expectations of the DVA, and whereas the DVA and RBF then jointly proceeded to detail site plan and architectural renderings, eventually recommending approval to the Planning Commission in early two thousand and nineteen, and whereas RBF then submitted a site plan that was approved by the city on June tenth, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the city desires to transfer the property to RBF Construction with conditions so development of the site may commence, and whereas the city has been working with RBF on determining the total project scope, available incentives, and cost as competing terms in finalizing a sale And whereas the city approved a draft purchase agreement for a warranty deed and sale on June tenth, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the purchase agreement has been made available for public inspection for over thirty days in accordance with the city land sale policy of April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and now therefore, be it resolved, the city of Schwartz Creek Council affirms the sale of the parcels and directs the mayor to complete and execute the purchase agreement as included in the July twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen City Council package. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to execute any and all other instruments and forms related to the sale as deemed necessary and advised by the city attorney and closing title company.
Motion's been seconded. Mr. Gilbert.
Yes. I still don't see how we can take two hundred and ten thousand dollars and turn it into ten thousand. I mean, that's ass a knife. Besides everything, messing up a good area over there, a nice area. So why don't you build houses there between the bank and Gas Becker?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that's correct.
Yes, yes.
Yes. So, two thousand, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, having these existing plans, master plan, DVA plan, a vision for improving downtown, community wants to have a nice downtown, typically, and the city has product, the city put all those properties on a map, and in this building, I think there might have been, how many were here, maybe forty or fifty people that night?
Probably.
And different tables, looking at the same properties at different stations, and trying to figure out, what do we do? We've got those two properties in question, the two others on Palfortino, one of which you mentioned, Holland Square at the time, I think it was just acquired as an existing defunct gas station, and others. And the results from that workshop were that there wasn't a known purpose for the property you mentioned, the one between Chase and Gas Becker, wasn't cleared, hold on to it for future parking or something else, it's got strange topography, overhead wires, and it's a bit smaller. But in terms of the other properties, what came out of that was, the prior housing study that the DVA did, indicated that we should have some existing housing units in or near downtown, something to complement the community that's a bit different than what we already offer, called the missing middle housing, for millennials and empty nesters, people that want to be civically engaged, have walkable environments, mixed-use places to live, and have a newer home to do it in. And so, taking the housing study, with the available properties and the information from that workshop, they targeted those two properties, or this part, this development site, the one we're talking about, Rooker Town Home Site, and said that's probably the place to go, because the housing study indicated that Morris Road is a great corridor into the community, that we can access the rest of the world to use the regional employment workforce to supply some local housing in the downtown, all right, to bring some people in and add some vitality to the area, keep downtown small, but incrementally improve it, and it's, I'll digress for a moment. One of the worst things we did as a nation is remove people from downtowns and create these quote-unquote central business districts. There's a great book out there called The Life and Death of Great American Cities, and that's pretty much what it laments in its entirety, is the, the modern skyscrapers of the seventies, eighties, and nineties, the people would erect in towns, or cities, big cities even, and then after five or six PM, there's just tumbleweeds through what used to be very vibrant communities. And what the author of this book, Jane Jacobs, says, you can't really bring people downtown, you have to put them there. And putting people downtown gives you security, eyes out of the street, constant customers for restaurants, people that are civically engaged, people that choose to be in the thick of it, that you might also find at concerts, or seeing the weather tomorrow, or attending this meeting. This is the theory, and so this is only fifteen units, it's probably not going to have a huge dramatic impact on the overall Schwartz Creek community, maybe some boughs. But the idea was, we wanted to have housing in or near downtown, and that was the site that was chosen at that workshop four years ago to do it, and I support that. Some of the people that are opposed to this live in Mary Dan Miller Farms, a four-story senior housing building. That's a great idea.
Well, that's because they look at the property and see how beautiful it looks.
I think Danny used to hunt pheasant where that building was built, but I stand behind the fact that that's exactly where senior housing should be.
Okay.
That's senior housing in the periphery of downtown, so that those folks have access, walkable access, public services, private services, retail, cultural amenities, and everything else they need.
This ain't going to be senior downtown, blacks.
This will be market-grade condominiums, but the areas around downtown should be for everybody.
Okay.
To my point, dense housing should be, like, that's a great model. Mary Dan, senior housing, being where it is, is textbook planning in my opinion, that's where it should be. Some communities actually put that two or three miles away, and I would, I would argue that's a bad idea. Putting dense housing like that on a farm field somewhere where you can't reach anything is not good. Putting that building on what used to be a farm field was a good idea, and it supports those populations, gives them a high quality of life, and does help build the community around it. This on a very small scale reflects the same sentiment, that we're not trying to create this huge big downtown and put a three-story building with offices on the bottom floor like Fenton does, we're putting triplex condos that reflect currently existing historical architecture in our community on the strip. That's the idea. Can something go wrong? Sure. Is it going to be for everybody? No. But to answer your question, there's a desire to improve downtown, there's a thought that housing in and around it will help, and at that workshop, that site was chosen as probably being the most conducive that the public controlled to be able to actually plan how it would happen. Then the planning occurred, developers were sought, none of them, nobody really had an appetite for it at the time, RBF is here tonight. at the time, RBF is here tonight, they've been doing projects similar to this in Fenton, they have an appetite for it, they're a Schwartz Creek-based group, they're gonna give it a shot. That's how we got here, in short, and so, it's not to defend that this is the best decision, this is a culmination of decisions and public input, and the work of public bodies over years getting us to this point, and so I'm explaining the rationale of the process, but to have housing in or near downtown is textbook planning practice.
Okay. Now, one time I was talked about the racetrack being sold, and about the houses along Morris Road being gone, it put businesses in there, so then you got condos in the middle of a business.
We can't predict the future, and I guess that's, that's part of the...
And another thing I'd like to know, okay, you got one contractor, why do you think the other ones didn't wanna do it?
It's, it's a new market, there's a lot of risk, there's no doubt about it.
Well, I see houses going up, whatever, and these... I'd just like to know why you got one person, or one company, that they were the only ones?
There were others, J.W. Morgan was interested, but didn't, this was a bit above their scale, so there's others interested, there's other locals interested, but there's no doubt, this is a different type of housing product, and it is riskier than what's been predictable, but that's part of, what was the statement someone made earlier, I'm like, "City can't combat," that was mentioned right at that podium in the last hour. I got a four-year-old daughter in the school district, I don't subscribe to that, city can't combat, not for a second. If we're gonna do something to become different, we have to do things differently.
Yeah, well, I don't think building condos over there is gonna make a big difference as far as improving downtown area.
I think it'll help, that's, that is my opinion, but...
You know, I don't care what you people say, it's wrong, and you can say what you wanna say, but there's no way I would ever vote to put those condos over there.
Mr. Mayor, can you help me speak to the pricing to ensure people will go down that path?
Well, one of the reasons that we don't have other developers wanting to do this, John, that's a question that you asked, is probably because they're developing similar buildings in other communities where they have guaranteed sales because they're selling faster than you can put them up, and why should they take a chance in Schwartz Creek? RBF lives in Schwartz Creek, their business is centered in Schwartz Creek, they believe in this community, other contractors from outside of town don't believe in this community because they're not part of it, so the people that live here believe in it, and they want to put their money where their mouth is, or where their heart is, I should say.
I grew up in Schwartz Creek, when I graduated, wanted to put a practice in Schwartz Creek, got drafted, spent a couple of years in the army, come back into this town, Genesee County said Schwartz Creek was a fat, gonna be the fattest growing area in Genesee County, this was nineteen sixty-eight, city wouldn't give me a zoning permit, so I ended up going half a mile outside the city limits, bought the farm next door, opened up a horse farm, and lived here for fifty years, was on the school board, vice president, was twice president of the Chamber of Commerce, was president of the Business and Sports Club, would have loved to have been on the city back then to help develop, but you know what, look around, Flushing, Grand Blanc, Davison, Linden, Fenton, even Duran, look at those towns. You can take a picture of Schwartz Creek, shoot downtown towards Hank and Don's, and go back in fifty years and look at a picture, it hasn't hardly changed. I'm sick of seeing this town look the same as it did fifty, sixty years ago, and not progress, and finally, with Sharp's new funeral home, the streetscape, the beautiful flowers downtown, it's finally starting to look like the community that I envisioned fifty years ago, and you can say what you want, you can't stay the same, the city's either gotta progress or die.
The city is not staying the same. Well, downtown is, you got the streetscape and all that, but that doesn't mean you have to build over here on this property.
Mrs. Hicks?
I've lived here since nineteen fifty-nine, and I've seen changes in downtown Schwartz Creek, I've seen businesses come, buildings come and go, and they, they change, they've changed many times, I don't know if you even remember if you've lived here that long, Monty Morgan had a little shoe store, and it was tough to get anywhere, so Schwartz Creek has always had local people that wanted to invest, they liked the community. We want the downtown. I went to California through San Francisco, they had, and I hear a lot about the Veterans Memorial, and this, and putting this up is going to make it not so good, well, one side of the Veterans Memorial, and I, we have a beautiful compared to everybody else's, it's a wonderful memorial, and everybody puts so much into it, but there's a parking lot on one side of it, a parking lot on the other side of it, and then the green spaces across the street. Taking that and putting nice-looking buildings that are going to reflect what we want our downtown to be is not, is not bad. People, there's not that many people that will be going in and out. I've been to the memorial many times, it's a nice, quiet place, I really believe it will continue to be that way. I went to memorials, our tour, went to two or three memorials out in many big cities, little, you know, little towns, and they're all just a little different, but it's the people going there that are quiet that, that enjoy it, or remember their, their family that's important. I don't think the condos across the street will affect their sitting there and, and, and doing that. They're not gonna, the people live there, they don't, they're not going to make a ruckus, so to speak, and as far as having a different kind of living space, if you go through these towns, they have the, what they're, what they're building is businesses and living space, that's what people are looking for. All the new buildings out there in the cities involve that, it's not like this is something new, we just have a little version of it in our town, and the city has looked into replacing parking, if they're worried about that, but there's lots of parking down there. This is my personal take on it, and I at first had my doubts and all that, and this is not a large development, and so, I'm sure that's why some of these bigger companies and that are not interested in doing this little small one to begin with, and I was talking, I talked to Adam many times with my questions, and I asked him about RBF, and I didn't even realize, sitting here, that they've done lots of stuff throughout the community, they've got a good track record, it's not like they're a fly-by-night that they're not gonna do, and we've built into this agreement that if they don't follow what we want, then it will revert back to the city. They, they have to stick to what they say they're gonna do, and our lawyer will attest to the agreement that they are, you know, we've built it in, you will do, you will build it to this standard, and they're willing to do that, and I think some other developers might not be that upfront with what they wanna do. And as far as the DVA Planning Commission, they're like a help to our city council, it's another opportunity for you people, and you've been so polite with your thoughts, I'm so, so glad that you came and expressed your doubts, because you could, some, some council meetings, people get rude, and you've been very polite, we appreciate that, that you've come with such a good attitude to, to talk about this, but like the DVA Planning Commission, even the park board, there are other opportunities where these sort of plans get figured out, that you can go and express your opinion there. Ultimately, we are responsible for the final decision, though they help us and give their recommendations, because they have expertise, like they could be architects on that, we try, different people on Planning Commission have different specialties to help, and then they send it to us, and we look at it again and take their recommendations, the park board, we, we have stuff that we wanna do, we send recommendations, again, city council has to take the responsibility for all the final decisions, but there's other opportunities for the community to talk at these other times that they meet during the month, to express their opinion too, so that what we get at the end is a culmination of all this. The DVA, Adam, I know the taxes with the DVA, explain how a DVA works.
The DVA captures existing tax levies on increments that are added to the district, let me explain. So if all the taxable value in downtown was worth a hundred dollars the year the DVA was formed, the DVA has no revenue. If the taxable value increases to a hundred and ten dollars, the DVA captures existing levies on the new ten-dollar increment, and so, what happens then is, the value here on these parcels is zero, it's exempt today, and if townhouses are built, they have a true cash value of two hundred thousand, taxable's half that, times fifteen, so you got one and a half million dollars worth of new taxable value, generates, I think they collect on twenty-six mils, could be forty thousand, roughly forty thousand dollars annually, but the DVA would capture sixty-three hundred dollars towards the street levy. So they would exercise those funds in the downtown for the existing programming as noted.
So how does that work with the general fund? Someone mentioned the general fund.
DVA's ability to do that expires, and then all the increment returns to those entities that were capturing those taxes in the first place. Most of the levies the DVA captures are county levies. Genesee County is one of the highest taxing counties in the state, right or wrong, there's the healthcare tax, four-H tax, culture tax, airport, MTA, EMA, veteran tax, and so, all those taxes on the new stuff, instead of going to those entities downtown, for the county, county general operating levies, five-point-five mils, goes to the DVA for that set amount of time, and county agencies agree to this with the understanding that it's an incentive, so they, they see it downtown, and most communities have these DVA's where they're trying, they're executing a plan to try to enhance the quality of life, with the understanding that should make everyone better in the long run, so they, they allow a period of time where those DVA's can capture those county dollars and city dollars to go and exercise their plan, whether it's on streetscapes, facade grants, recreation programming, whatever it is, and then at the end of it, the increased value then goes, is distributed as normally would a tax bill. Our Downtown Development Authority does not levy anything in addition to that. State statute does allow DVA's to exercise levying up to two mils just in their district, some do, some don't, this one has not, doesn't intend to, and so, it's, they call it tax increment financing, and to the taxpayer, it's pretty seamless, they pay the same tax as they would in or out of a DVA, but then the treasurer then accounts for what the difference is, and sends some to the DVA, and some still goes to taxing agencies like the state. Education tax is not captured, as are debt services, so the local school debt that was approved, for example, will obviously go towards that purpose and not the DVA, with DVA understanding the importance of the street levy opted out against capturing that, so that's why that's set aside, so any new taxable value in this district will contribute directly towards the streets and not have that captured. So, tax increment financing can get relatively complicated pretty quickly, but the short of it is, new taxable values generated allows the DVA to capture more at a much higher rate than what the city would normally get. So, our general, our general levy's only four-point-eight mils for the city of Schwartz Creek, DVA's capturing twenty-six, and so, it's very potent for them to get tax base in this area to be able to, to exercise on their plan.
So, why do we have a DVA? Why did we okay the DVA? What's the purpose? What is it the purpose to make our downtown?
Yes, and I think it was the two thousand three master plan, and probably before this, it was a highlight of the plan creation, the public outreach was downtown's not good. You know, we had good neighborhoods, improving parks, but the whole brand, identity of the community and what's offered downtown in terms of hospitality, services, recreation, all the stuff that other communities seem to have, wasn't meeting expectations, so there was a demand to try to improve downtown, and so the DVA was created shortly after that, with that objective is to improve downtown, and of course, they had to go figure out how, what, what would they do to make that happen, and there's a vision, it's in the plan, I won't digress and try to explain it all, but summarily, the DVA board right now is working with the concept that downtown doesn't need to be enlarged, or go up, or expand in some way that other communities pursue, like Fenton's a great example of doing well what they do, which is creating a very busy big downtown, the thought process here, we can, we can go with a two or three block downtown and have a thriving community if we can encourage enough of the small-town businesses, and enough recreation, and enough culture, and enough events, to provide the quality of life that people are looking for, so maybe it's the farmer's market Sundays, or things like that too that fall into it. So, they've got a lot of stuff they're working on, whether it's the Holland Square renovation, the streetscape, I think the sun, improvement grants were mentioned, they obviously, the flowers, that's a DVA thing, you know, right or wrong, spending, DVA captured tax dollars on flowers, who knows, argue about it, that's one of the things they do, they support, actually, they operate the family movie night, and help support the Tuesday night concerts, and things like that, and so, it's, it's all encompassing, they're trying to elevate the quality of life by focusing on downtown, culture, recreation, physical function, business, climate, and, and the ability, buildings to be sustainable, right, we've got a lot of buildings that are tall. And so, that's been evolving since two thousand three, obviously, everything kind of fell apart between two thousand seven and eight or so, especially two thousand ten, and nothing really got back on track until about two thousand fourteen, fifteen, by on track and stable, and that's right around the time the raceway went under, and the community got back together and was trying to figure out, how can we further this vision of improving downtown, and how can we use the properties or the assets in the city, and so, there were very specific workshops here towards that function. So, that's the process and how we got here. It's, it's been a long time coming, as Paul B. P. used to say, government's healthily slow, but it's pretty sure it is.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm telling you, if Paul B. P. was alive, he'd never go for that.
I don't agree with that.
Because I had talks with him about that. Anyway, a lot of people, including myself, resent the fact that we're giving away two hundred thousand dollars.
I can speak to that.
I would just, with the, with the, the amount of people that this building, with, with the type of people that this building has the opportunity to bring in, in addition to the taxable value that this building's gonna generate, I would look at that loss of two thousand, two hundred thousand as an investment into our future and our city's future, and what we can be capable of after obtaining this goal.
The reason that we're pricing it higher than two hundred thousand dollars under what was a critical time, the builder, and Mr. Vettel and I, talking to the owner, didn't think that you'd sell condos if it costs an extra two hundred thousand dollars to build that, that no one would afford that, so pricing it up, I would think people can afford to pay for what they're getting, and the taxes will recoup that money that we get from that for five years.
I don't think you're gonna recoup two hundred thousand dollars in five years.
Well, the math says we will.
Well, I think you're dreaming.
Well, certainly, I don't think we'll recapture it if we keep a green space.
I don't understand why, in green space, right, what does it cost us?
About two thousand a year to maintain.
Yeah. And I also told you, you're selling it for ten thousand dollars, I'd give you fifteen thousand for it. I'll tell you, this don't make sense.
At the same time that that was devalued, the city had a chance to buy the land between the post office and cemetery for ninety thousand dollars.
And he didn't do it, did they?
No, so they got it for free, they, people gave it to us as a tax write-off. Why don't you talk about the ninety thousand? you talk about the ninety thousand that we got for nothing, but instead you'd rather talk about an investment that the city's making?
Mr. Mayor?
So, so everyone's clear, the, the first vacant parcel was purchased in 2004 for ninety thousand, one front eight, Fortino Drive. The second one was a house purchased in 2007 for a hundred and twenty. The idea was, if I recall, Paul Beke was looking to find a secondary locator option for the senior center. They needed more space, this is before they expanded, it was possible they'd move there. I am ninety-nine percent certain the city would have given that to them for free at a loss of two hundred and ten thousand dollars the senior center needed, in the interest of providing the services we provide. Same way we lose tons of money by leasing the library for free and the current senior center for free. This government institution doesn't exist to make money. The real estate was not purchased for two hundred and ten thousand dollars, the understanding is sell it for two hundred and fifty and use the money to improve the quality of life somewhere else. The understanding is, we were going to improve the quality of life by putting the senior center there, when it didn't happen. And then after the economy collapsed and property was then donated, as Mr. Vinson said to us, we just got to move forward. So paying two hundred and ten thousand in the mid-.
Whatever, the senior citizen whose center was built there.
Mr., you don't have the floor, Mr. Gilbert. He's hawking, presumably he's already been in the floor.
No, thank you, Mr. Vettel, you agree. So, of course, we want to be fiscally prudent. Why give away something if you don't have to? The assets we recover, we can use for other things. So if we could sell this for two hundred thousand and still get the product we wanted, we would do it and use that money on something else that helps our community thrive. The value just isn't there today. There's doctors searching for a medical office in downtown, probably will locate in an existing building, but when they were doing their search, they were looking at city properties, and one of them, Confortino Drive, they were interested in. But it's 2019, properties that readily available, buildings are cheap. Suffice to say, at the end of the negotiations, if it was offered theoretically for free, they wouldn't take it. The value just isn't there to develop commercially in some of these locations where there's restrictions, self-composed on the property or existing on the property or whatever. So some of these properties that were purchased fifteen years ago at high prices just don't have the value. That is why we got the bran off property donated for free. That is why we literally could not give a piece of property away to a medical, current practicing physician to build an office. Current single-family lots in and around the community sell for about ten thousand dollars. In point of fact, the city sold a residential lot in the downtown last year for, I think, eleven, and the buyer backed out. The values just aren't there like they used to be. Now, you can make an argument that it's, it's worth something more if we sold it for commercial or some other use or held onto it, absolutely. But as a government and the same bank that we purchased, don't you give to the senior center, it's an asset we're using to try to improve the community. The master plan, the DDA plan, the subsequent reviews brought us to this point, and we can debate whether or not green space or townhomes makes more sense. Perfectly valid set of opinions there. But in terms of the, trying to recover costs as an objective has never been the forefront of why we enter into these transactions. The city has given away a lot of land before if we thought the end use over the next hundred years is going to be in the interest of the community. And so I, I feel the need to enter into that as we talk about the negotiation that got us here, that the developer's been going back and forth about the, the content of the units, whether it be two-car garages, basements, a second porch instead of one porch, things that'll add, you need quality of life amenities to those homes if we hope to have for two hundred years. And of course, it comes down to cost, because they've got a ceiling on their price point, and the ceiling's very close to what similar units are selling for in heritage. And they're listing at about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars right now for fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot. And so this is the competition, which brings us full circle. We want to see very quality housing here, because it'll be here forever. This purchase price is important, but if we're building a condo in 2019, it's going to be here in 2119. We'd rather have it be the seventeen hundred square foot, two-car garage, full basement, granite countertop, double porch unit, instead of something that has to be cheapened down because we want to more money yet from. And the developer is still taking a risk with all that considered. So understand that we want to be prudent fiscally, of course, but this isn't a decision and like we're liquidating mom and dad's property and just trying to get as much money as we can. We're not. We're trying to get a use here that's going to be good for our community for the next hundred years. And there's a very valid argument to have there that green space might be better suited. But in terms of the, the financing of it, it's not the priority. The priority is the end product. And in working with the developer and the architect for the last eighteen months, trying to get as much value into the homes, knowing that there's a peak or a top threshold on the sale value, brought us to this price point. And even then, the, the price point's close to market. If we were to sell one of those lots tomorrow for a single-family house, as it's platted today, I doubt we'd get ten thousand dollars for it. As far as taxes returning the value in five years, maybe not, maybe it's ten. But again, in terms of trying to build up a downtown that has the amenities and the function that we want, money is a means to that end. It's not the end. If we can reduce the end by creating these plans and fulfilling them with public partnerships, we wouldn't even need the money. We can lower the taxes, make it go away. So money is a tool we use to improve quality of life. And again, that's the thought with which this was purchased. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars in a property, but if that's what the senior center needed, then that's, that's the cost of doing business in the government world. Now we're trying to repurpose it. So a lot of thought has gone into the sale price, but it's not, it's more of a negotiation towards getting the product we want. And that product's on paper, included in the master deed and site plan, going to be filed and recorded, and only sold with the provision that there's a reversion clause that has to be built that way. And so a lot of these considerations have been thought about and executed in a different way, so to speak. We're getting our value in the property, not in cash. Does that make sense? I'm being long-winded. There was some good questions posed earlier to Mayor that I think our developer purchaser can answer if they're, about again, about vehicle access and sidewalk destruction.
I will ask Mr. Joy to give us some answers and come forward and do that. But first, I would like to, second, this is his, and I'm very appreciative that everyone's been polite
We have a reset.
and been thoughtful, and obviously put some thought into what you want to say and say it very clearly and thoughts, what's on your mind. Meetings tend to break down when people don't think clearly and they just act on emotion and start shouting out emotions instead of making rational arguments. Mr..
Can we take a break first?
Before Mr. Joy comes up, we will take a five-minute break, so we'll take a break if Congress wants you.
I get back there.
Who else would like to speak? That's right, Mr. Joy was going to come. Thank you.
Good evening.
Would you like to tell us something first before you take questions?
Just, I really appreciate everybody's questions and concerns and, you know, both positive and negative for the, for the project. Obviously, there's no, there's no goal to take it out this morning. You know, it's, we're trying to do something nice for the community. It's something that we, as everybody's expressed, the DDA came up with the idea. We were approached as a, as a developer contractor. Quite honestly, the only reason we are proceeding with this is because of barns right here, my dad's barn right here, my hands, my nipples, would live in the community. You know, is it the perfect solution to that property? You know, Mr. Gilbert, I, I certainly understand, you know, your, your desire to just leave that green space, it's been green space for, forever. Very valid. I, I can't stand here and say that you're wrong on that. But, you know, our, our intent is for people to drive off to six and nine, get off on Morris Road, come downtown Source Creek, and we want them to say, wow, we can't believe this development is in Source Creek, Michigan. We want it to be an eye-opener. We want it to be something that attracts people downtown. You know, it's not huge, it's fifteen units. It's not going to add a huge traffic load to the road. We have, we, we plan for the future for a, a turn lane that Adam seemed to express as a report. So, yeah, I appreciate any, any comments or questions that anybody might have.
Questions to the developer? To members first? Sir Arnaud?
Mr. Mayor, there was a question about traffic, maintaining traffic during construction, concern about existing infrastructure damage. Sidewalk curb, if I forget something, anybody can speak up, you know. But then, and then maybe I think questions about the, the demand of pricing and the rationale for the unit size and sale price. Those were submitted throughout earlier, public comment.
Yeah, as far as interruptions to the traffic, certainly it's going to be much less than the, the current streetscaping downtown and middle road. Fortino is a, is a secondary, secondary project. We will have to cut into the load with, with each unit for the sewer. But it, it'll be a, a matter of, you know, a day or two. It's not going to be a long-term interruption. As far as the pricing is concerned on the units, we're aiming high. We're, we're trying to attract as, as much as we think we can get back in downtown. We could have the units going as high as three hundred thousand per unit. That's our hope. We'll see what they actually sell for. But these are, you know, two fifty is, is definitely kind of right down the middle for what we anticipated. You, you just can't build new for around two hundred thousand these days, especially now, the type of amenities that we, we plan on bringing to this community. Cover, you know, right around porches, covered decks. We want to bring something nice.
Mr. Chix. A little more specific as far as traffic interruption, will it ever, will it ever be closed down so nobody can get through or, or not?
Well, to see exactly where the square's at. But we anticipated that at least one-way traffic, having a.
At least one way.
A person, yes, a person on each side directing traffic is what I would expect.
Okay, so it's never going to be completely shut down?
No, and again, this would be, you know, we're going to do the sewer tap in as one day, as we expected. And of course, we have the, you know, backfilling, but I, a day or two, you know, rebuilding. And of course, we can work around any events that are going on. Obviously, we're not going to be doing this very long time later or anything like that.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, well, no, these drawings don't show the street being moved over out at, out at Morris Road.
No, I, I, it was just for future planning, we left enough for selling, or twelve-foot lane, turn lane in the future.
That's a project we plan to undertake. Morris Road's approved for federal funds in the next three-year traffic improvement program coming overseas.
Okay, but is the road going to be moved?
Fortino Drive will be moved. The north curb line of Fortino Drive will be moved approximately twelve feet north, allowing for the same incoming lane to taper, and then having a dedicated left turn lane, which will obviously have more visibility around the cemetery wall by virtue of also being twelve feet further north. And then a dedicated right lane where the exclusive outbound lane is today. So the eastbound exit from Fortino will become right turn. The current westbound lane will become the left turn lane, and then there'll be another north lane heading westbound added to that flare. And that'll be done when Morris Road is rehabilitated. And we don't have the year yet, it could be 2021 or 2022. That's because it's in the, the federal tip application process. So it's, it's affirmed but not scheduled. And that'll be subject, of course, to some additional engineering, and that's why it's not proposed on those plans at this point in time.
Okay.
Mr. Chix.
All right, this is in the agreement as far as your responsibility to build up to a certain standard. So if, and this is probably our lawyer, our employer to, some of these words in here are interesting. We've referred to these as townhomes, but in the agreement, you use the terms condominium and multi-unit housing. Does that change anything?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just the, you, it's just what we're calling it in the agreement. From one agreement to the other, it's just, what the townhomes that they're building are referenced as that, but it doesn't change anything of what we're talking about. More of what is the important stuff is like the intended uses and the exhibits that would be attached to the purchase agreement is, that's what they're going to actually end up doing.
Okay. What does, what does the term, only the seller can extinguish the intended use?
The intended use is for these homes. So they're going to submit us with plans, and the city is the only one that can say, we're changing this. So it's not like they can purchase the, it's not like they can purchase a property for ten thousand dollars and then next week they decide to do something else. Or even two years down the road, if, if that's what it's taken for them to build, do this build out, the intended use of these townhomes does not change. And only the seller, the city, will be able to change that over time. So fifty years from now, if somebody else wants to do something with that property, the city's the one that's going to extinguish it. That's why we also plan on recording most of these documents.
Okay. Possibility of reverter?
If, if they don't meet the scheduled, and this is one of the things that when we put in, that gives the city the power, basically. If they don't meet their uses and they don't meet the, the scheduled timelines, which is, then the, the property will go back to the city.
Okay, do they, and the timeline is?
Well, the timelines, we're still working on that, but.
But it would.
The scheduled timeline, you know, if they don't hit certain benchmarks, then it, it has a possibility of reverting back to the city.
Possibility, it's not black and white.
It's, well, it, that's, that's just a legal term, it's a possibility reverter. But it will be, the timeline will be the timeline.
Council can revert it, but you have, you have other options at your disposal. Maybe, you know, if the economy takes again, there's, there's other options, or we, we're out of your control.
It's a nuclear option of if, if things aren't met, if the deadlines aren't met, which those will be worked out. But, you know, it's kind of a nuclear option of the property, the city will take the property back.
Okay. Now, assignability, it's page seventy-eight J, they talk about assignability. And when I talked to Adam, he said that somebody else could potentially buy this thing, but all this, all these, that follows with the people if somebody, an LLC purchases.
The city would, is the only one that can make the changes to the document. The city has, in the master deed, it's also going to be listed as a, you know, where the city has certain approvals and things like that, too, even with the, the association. So the city has a lot of power in this. And that's the whole point, is generally, a general contractor, and this is just my opinion, generally will not allow whoever's selling them to take the property back from them. So it was kind of surprising, even when I said that they, you know, put a possibility reverter in here, that they, that they would agree to it, to be honest, because they are taking out the undertaking of having, putting all the work into it and then having, going back to the city. So it's, it's, it was surprising to me, to be honest.
So, Mr. Joy, you're aware of all this and you're willing to agree to all this?
Yeah, and I'd just like to say again, exactly, the other developer probably wouldn't be standing here right now. We're, we're willing to take the risk on the community. We think it's understood, and, and we're willing to try and do something nice.
And it sounds like you're getting the lion's share of the risk here.
Yeah, I'm pretty nervous, honestly, but I, I think it's going to be successful.
Okay, speaks well. All right, thank you.
Mr. Joy, if the sale goes through tonight, do you have a time schedule when you'd like to get buildings? Mr. Jury, if the sale goes through tonight, do you have a time schedule when you'd like to get building on these and have the first section done?
We're, the biggest hole right now is through the County Attorney Commission. I had a meeting with them last Friday. I believe we reached an understanding, we're going to have to do some more underground storage, which is quite expensive. But at this point, we made commitment and we're following through. So, I revoke for plan approval realistically within two months. We want to break ground this fall and hopefully have something weather protected by winter. So, it is, it is our intent to have something underway this year.
Underground storage?
For the storm, the attention.
Water. Because they're taking what is now open field and putting buildings and pavement on it, so you have to have someplace for the water to go. I had it up just a moment ago, let's see where it was. Oh, have you had any inquiries from people interested in buying?
You know, it's, until it's right in front of you. Inquiries, yes, some interest, definitely some verbal support. But it's always something to actually walk through the show. We really don't expect to have a person agreement.
I have heard from even some members of other commissions in the city here that they're interested in buying one when it's done. It looks really exciting to them. So, there are people in our community, and I know people in the community, people who live here a lot of years, thinking they want to move into something like that instead of what it is today.
That's good to hear.
Rider Shirt? Rider Shirt, yes, he may, he wanted to come back to Schwartz Creek. He has mentioned he is going to spend most of his time in the new funeral home. This gun, which should be like next week, right, to eat dog?
Well, my mind's rough sharp. May 2019. Right around the corner.
They're hard at work.
They're, they're going fast, just those buildings take a long time.
They're finishing up. All right, it looks like that's the last hard question, so thank you very much.
Julia's got one.
Oh, okay, from the number eight here.
Ms. Julia Haslam, and I have a question about if you build, are you going to build it all in one phase? Or if they're building this, people wanted to purchase that one?
Yes, exactly. We're going to build the first tri unit. And we have to sign the trial. Because if they sell, if they don't, then that's part of the provision clause. You know, if they just sit forever, you know, the remaining property goes back to the city. We're not going to go, we're not going to put up $3 million buildings and cross our fingers, say yes, but I really think we're going to, the first few up, people will walk through. I think they're going to move. But yeah, we're, we're going to go with any developer, any investor, you build to the demand.
First triplex facing Morris Road?
Yes.
So, if worst-case scenario, the first building was up and nothing were to happen, maybe 80% of the property or more would?
Yeah, you still have the parking and the rest space.
Or at least be available as there's absorption in the market.
So, you have the first one built towards Morris Road? Okay, and also, you talk about doing the roads. Now, is that going to affect existing businesses as if I make less space for them? Like Fortino's and other businesses along the road?
No, we're, we have to cut it, the standard for the sewers actually under the existing road other than Fortino Drive. So, that's, it'll just be a temporary interruption for a day or two. We'll cut in the road, dig down the tunnel, extend the sewer into the property, and then patch the road and curb and sidewalk.
So, then you said with the sewers and everything that you would be doing the house, the house and the town hall at every demand?
Right, yeah, so it will be, it would just be one, quite a bit at a time. Except maybe a day or two per building. And we're only going to put up, you know, if things go great, maybe we'll put up three buildings next year. But it'll be pretty minor, especially compared to the streetscaping downtown right now.
Now, do they say there's definite need for this? Because I know there's a lot of condos, you know, there's some, you know, just by Kroger or something like that. You have a whole condo development over there.
Correct.
So, is there a need for people to be expressing a desire or?
You know, we're dealing with something that, you know, it's hard to gauge demand if there's not something available. These are, these are going to be different. They're hiring, they're, they're reports, you know, downtown living. But I think this is a community of what, 70, 80,000 people?
Six.
Six. So, and we're, we're trying to sell 15. You know, it's not for everybody, but, you know, I think it's never been offered before.
I mean, also, you talk about putting another road in, is it the height new, because there's houses back behind that property, or is that new road going to go?
Not, not a road, it's really just a driveway, a shared driveway. They have the garages in the back rather than the front. It's really just a matter of what's, you know, we want to, we want to present, you know, our, our pace board, you know, the town, townhome look along Fortino Drive. We don't want to look at, we don't want to look at garages.
Right, so then, is that the back, you know, from the base of the back of the homes to the road or off that?
Correct, it's just a U-shaped road, driveway essentially, that services the garages in the back.
To me, the area is so small, it's hard to reimagine.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that many houses going up there.
Sure. Actually, it's, it's down now.
Yeah, just, you know, for the size that you want and, you know, the number of buildings. And it just seems like that area, it just seems so small. And it's going to be private?
Yeah. If you're going to build cities with some, you know, houses, you know, downtown kind of fit, like San Francisco.
Old road houses?
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's kind of the verbal word.
Kind of tall and skinny.
Yeah, yeah, precisely.
Thank you.
That's not for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Jury?
It may not be for him, but somebody. Jason Keen, 5260 Burge Press.
Are there any financing guarantees in that legal agreement that says if we get halfway through the project and some reason the money runs out, or is that an issue or not?
It's the reverter clause.
Goes back to that.
And the condominium act has a maximum statute of six years for performance. We'll set up a timeline, as Chris indicated, it might be commencement within one year or something. So, there'll be some closer benchmarks. But whether it's financing or he wins a lottery and moves in the Antarctic, or whatever reason it is.
Pretty sure it wouldn't go in the Antarctic.
But if, whatever reason, if it stops by choice or by default or whatever, then the reverter's taking over.
And then, has the city taken into consideration if the properties don't sell at the $300,000 mark? Tax, you know, obviously $300,000 properties can bring in more tax revenue than $100,000.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't even that high. I think comparable square footage probably sells for about 250 in Spring Brook East. The 14, 1500 models are around 210, 220. And these are 1700, and I'd argue better location, especially if you're looking condominium without, without property to maintain, right? And so, I think that ballpark, the midpoint around 250 is probably pretty reasonable. But this is where the risk comes. It is a different market. You know, there's 160,000 housing units in Genesee County, we're just trying to sell 15 in Schwartz Creek. So, you don't need a big rush of people for this type, but there really isn't a comparable. And so, they're going to build specs, maybe, or offer empty shells that they can finish or something. Once they can start to feel that market with the first triplex going in and the specs being built, they'll have an understanding of better price points. But that's, well, it's.
They didn't sell anywhere from 310 to 378. Those are two places. Yeah, we're probably even, you know, 50,000 less, you know, in general. And, you know, we're going to finish off the first one, and if we lose money, we lose money. I mean, it's, we want to do the first one to kind of set the bar high. So, we might put a little extra into it. And if we, if we have to lose money to go sell, to, you know, try and get other people, you know, interested, so be it.
Any other questions?
If it reverts back, is that going to cost any money to defend it? I mean legally, will that entail any money?
If there was a, any, any legal proceedings would cost money, I'm sure. I think if we, if we're running the paper, obviously something failed or broke down. I think our understanding is that this is a public-private partnership. They're taking a risk. And I think if they came in here in a year and said, "Look, we built a triplex, as you can see, it's, there's only one sold, or there's problems, we can't do this. Here's the property back," or what do we do? Does this make sense? So, we have, we'll have a problem, we'll have a collective problem at that point to solve. And I don't think we'd be interested in suing them or vice versa. So.
It wouldn't make any financial sense for us to make a big legal case.
Chris, you mean?
Yeah, we, I mean, we're taking the risk. If we lose money, we're not going to spend more money losing more, you know, on a legal case trying to, I mean, there's no argument to come after the city. I mean, they're essentially taking a gamble.
I was just going to say, like, just to stack on that, if they're in the position where they're, that we have to enforce that clause, they're already going to be in a really bad spot. And just like you just said, you just kind of said it, it's not going, you could make that legal case, it's just going to be very expensive for him, not for us. We're already on retainer by the city. So, we have to fight lawsuits, you know, even if people have no merit whatsoever. So, it's like one of those things where people will say, "Is this going to get sued?" You can always have a legal case being fought. What we try to do is put the city in the best position possible. So, if it does come up, alls we have to do is point at the contract, and then that's going to be their issue. It's not going to be the city's issue. And of course, we don't want to invoke that clause. We obviously want the best for them, but it is there if we need to invoke it.
Couple of other things that were, we've acknowledged, though, maybe is that these are not intended to be rentals like the ones at Apple Creek. These are going to be sold to people who are going to be living there, they'll own them. It's their property to keep up. And the condominium rules, I was just going through those today, there are a lot of rules in there, and you are very strict on the fact that the owners have to keep that up and do a lot, or they're in big trouble. And they are going to be paying for any improvements that have been made because they failed to keep up their property. And if you live with your neighbors, I mean, these are.
Common areas even include front landscaping and everything on this one, I believe.
Yeah, exactly.
So, there's really not, pretty much everything visible is maintained by the association. So, one person can't go in there and mess it up. Which we've seen happen before.
No campers in the driveway. It could be, it could not seem, a condo.
I'm all for that.
I also understand, Mr. Jury, that this development here is to be a model that you hope to be able to use in other communities too. It goes over well here in Schwartz Creek, so you're putting the money up front and a lot of work into something that you hope to be able to market onto other communities. And you may have a slim margin in Schwartz Creek, but you hope to make it up elsewhere.
Correct, yes. I have a big smile on my face, I've, this thing's been a couple of years, and it's that I am going to talk about.
Anyone else? Last chance, we're going to get our business here.
So, will there be an association there that people have, by, you know, serve regulations?
Yes, so they'd be, the state records by law, for any, you know, kind of, in association with the developer.
Do they have, you know, like the residents, you know, there's a lot of children, I mean, do we have problems, you know, with the road, you have your children? Because we've got a fire station up there and everything, so that cause problems that way, you know, fire station, you know? And like someone mentioned earlier, there will be a lot of noise, and there's a fire, you know, or anything like that?
No more so than the other, the other downtown. I mean, it's, I'm stable, there's a lot of children that are, you know, bothering, I think.
Except for not in the road.
Well, yeah.
Excited, don't they, if you have a problem with children wanting to play in the road, because there's some places. And our numbers trending.
Sure. Right. I can all say, you know, with same concern where they live, you know, county road or, you know.
I can tell you by experience, you'll be used to certain noises after a while. I live on Millard Road, we have the flight path of the airplanes taking off from Bishop Airport right over my house, and we also have a train right behind our backyard. And so, you get used to those things. I was eating lunch with my son over at Jan's Bar this noon, and a train came past, and we simply couldn't talk till the train went past because you couldn't hear anything over the noise of the whistle. I think all of us in Schwartz Creek are used to that. We know how it goes, you get used to things. Anyone else? All right then, I believe that we are ready. Thank you so much, Mr. Jury. Adam Turk, would you call the role and the motion, please?
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Kingston?
Yes.
Motion passes? Our next item on business is, I'm not going to read that, it's a long, long description of it.
I'm not going to read either.
Change in the code of ordinances to restrict certain areas for wells, groundwater wells, which there aren't any in the area. But we just have to put that into our rules because it's part of the requirements of the state government or state partner. Would you please read that, Mr. Kramer? You don't even have to read all of it, just read them to, yeah, to the beginning of the rules.
Whereas the city of Schwartz Creek acquired 5012 Allen Drive from Genesee County and subsequently removed the known fuel tanks and above-grade structures. And whereas ExxonMobil desired to proceed with soil removal and site restoration marked for the site available for reuse. And whereas the city of Schwartz Creek, ExxonMobil Oil Corporation, and Groundwater Environmental Services Incorporated entered into a limited site license agreement for the purpose of granting a limited license to enter upon certain described property upon the terms and conditions specified in the agreement on April 10, 2017. And whereas the site was subsequently, substantially remediated as a result of that agreement with the understanding that the other conditions, including a prohibition on area wells, would apply. And whereas the Schwartz Creek City Council further directed staff to proceed with the preparation of groundwater restriction ordinance for review by the city council. And whereas ExxonMobil and their consultants further engaged in subsurface exploratory work, well audits, and public outreach, including a public hearing and presentation on April 23, 2019, related to the creation of said ordinance. And whereas the ordinance is ready for abastion. Therefore, I move the city of Schwartz Creek ordains an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Schwartz Creek by adding section 3346 to chapter 19, article 2 of the code of ordinances of the city of Schwartz Creek to regulate and restrict the use of groundwater in certain areas of the city of Schwartz Creek due to the presence of groundwater contamination resulting from a release. due to the presence of groundwater contamination resulting from a release pursuant to Part two-oh-one Environmental Remediation or Part two-one-three Leaking Underground Storage Tanks of the Natural Resource and Environmental Protections Act, eighteen ninety-four, PAA Public Act four-five-one has amended. The City of Schwartz Creek ordains.
And it goes on several pages.
I'll second, second that.
We've got a second to that, I'm looking for how far it goes.
To thirty-five.
To thirty-five. Okay, motion made in second, and I have a couple of small conclusions in the word. Page twenty-five, position eighteen. Let's see, right?
Where, where are you looking at, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, section four-B.
Okay.
Which is just before, where it says section five at the bottom of the page. If you go up to the second to the last line, it ends with a Z and one on the next pa, on the next line, I think that should say Zolun instead of being Saffley.
You're right.
And, uh, two lines above that. It was the word effect, followed by E.D., and I think it should be affected.
Affected.
Affected parcel, see that?
Yep.
Just typos slipped in there when we were writing it up. See, I bring this up because I have to sign it as a mayor.
Sure you go, buddy.
Page twenty-seven, five. I believe the last one should, should be parcels, because it's street addresses, shouldn't be more than one parcel. And, uh, also the same thing on page twenty-eight under G, uh, and I think under, also under six, on page twenty-seven and so, should have, I said the other word parcel there in the last working sentence, too.
What'd you say on page twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight. Let me find, like, G. Somewhere in there it also says parcel, I think it shouldn't be plural, because...
After affected parcel.
Yeah, probably second line.
Parcells that, that affect the parcel.
The affected parcels should be, because it's a whole list. And there may, there may even be more than one occurrence there, so just check through it. Make it sound appropriate. That's it. Anyone else? If there are no other comments or questions about anything in this, um, we'll call for a vote on it, please.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. Now we have a discussion on the N C Online Insurance Agreement. That was, I think, the last thing in the purse for our package, or at least the second to the last, it's second to the last, way at the bottom. And, uh, this is, a company wants to order a ton of insurance on water insur lines, uh, that belong to the property owners, so that if something happens and they have to have it fixed, uh, it would not cost them to pay insurance monthly. They would like the city to let them use our letterhead and say that we are promoting this. And I believe that's the discussion running out.
Yeah, I don't think we should do it.
No.
We're running out of gas here, but you bridged a recommendation, as I say, we can do about it. I don't think it's good. They were asking for too many liberties to use the city's brand image and authority to market their product, my opinion, as an endorsement. It's not, yeah, it doesn't read like endorsement, it reads like recommendation from the city. If you go through the materials.
Yeah, I said, almost those read like a tax.
So...
I also didn't like how it, it essentially puts in the equivalent of a non-compete agreement.
It does, it absolutely does.
The city from doing the same with others, and to me, that just takes away the free market economy, turns into a monopoly.
They, they can offer that product now, and so can others, create a marketplace. If we, uh, become a partner in it, then they can begin changing rates to whatever, what do I pay?
Eight dollars. I was happy to hear you say that. Eight dollars this month.
At the...
Yeah.
I don't think it's for us.
But we don't need a motion on that or anything, we just have to...
If, if the council wants to proceed, I can try, they, they indicated they could soften the letter up and, you know, modify their approach a bit. We can look into it more, and I can bring back materials that are a bit more refined, but they're not even communicating that well about how they can go about doing that, so I'm, at this point, I had no resolution included, uh, but I'm confident, at this point, recommending we just move on without further discussions or review.
I believe that if some of our citizens would be interested in something like this, they can search out companies that would do it, rather than the city sending a company to them on our letterhead and our meeting, go after that.
Yeah, the service, they can get this insurance today, they just, they really want, I think exclusivity is a big part of it, because even their rates are noted, you know, whatever it is, they pay any amount initially. So once that monopoly's in place and people start making use of it, then who knows what they charge. Even, all around, none of our other franchises are exclusive. Telecommunications are related services, as an example. Allow open competition.
Okay, the suggestion is that we not consider, I'm just gonna run out of this list here, I have a whole way to think, uh, yes or no that we consider it? No from Dr. Peterson.
No.
No. Uh, no.
I think it's unanimous, I go no too, so, um, don't bring it up again, Mr. Jury, I don't...
Okay.
That concludes our business tonight. We open the meeting to the public once more. If you thought of anything else that's really a burning issue for you, let us know.
Steve Bonham, D three fifty-six, Worcester. Number one, last Monday, I think it was great the way the city recruited police officers, I, I wish everybody had the village bag and shape in two days. I make no secrets about it, I'm on board with these condos. It's not gonna be anything khaki. And if you Facebook with me, you know all I do is share pictures of houses, and I wanted to say this. Sixteen hundred square foot condo, built into two thousands. A three-story town home, the art history of Detroit, for five hundred and seventy-six dollars, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. I mean, these are gonna be some classy things, and I, I'm just looking forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right then, we will close the meeting to the vote, and we back to Member of the Council, and let's turn the rest to final thoughts. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Davidson?
I was blaming out there, I wasn't, just know what you're saying. It's late, I think we're all to that point, right? Uh, I just wanted to end on a positive note, so, uh, as, I think everybody here knows, uh, I tried my best to be active and leading the community as we can. Uh, that's part of our, our business model, and, and we chose to live here. Side note, I grew up in the city of Flint on the east side, and we had a fire, we had a fire substation literally like in the middle of our street. It was like one of the other houses there, and it was one of the, one of our favorite places to hang out at, and as far as, like, no, no kids ever got ran over by a fire sub, so, I don't think it would be an issue there. Uh, aside from that, the Elm Road Slip and Slide, huge success this year, that was this past Saturday. Uh, the fire department in the, in the heat wave decided to open up the fire hydrants, uh, two separate days for some selected times for the kids to come on and play. Again, great community event. Uh, the streetscape is coming along fantastically. I probably have the most insight in that, I'm down there working on eighty-four eighty Miller every single day, so I'm out there seeing what they're doing, and it's coming along, a lot of works went into it, it looks fantastic. And all the other things that we have planned in Schwartz Creek are all coming as planned or better, and it's, I'm just overwhelmed that we've got the type of mentality in place right now, uh, and the motivation to start bringing these community events together. You, you wouldn't be, I guess you would be surprised at something as simple as a lieutenant from the fire department saying, "Man, it is hot. Let's crack one of these fire hydrants open and let the kids play in it." Uh, it was just, it drew so much attention, just that good old hometown community feel, uh, and I'm just, I'm really excited to be a part of it and where we're headed. I think we're making all the right decisions.
Are there any other questions?
Sure.
How many times did you get on the hill on Saturday?
Oh, I feel like this is a little question.
Yeah, 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 you were, you...
More than I can count.
You did a lot of work, you, you were, you did a lot of work up there.
I had a lot of fun, yeah.
He's adjusting all the hoses and everything up there, he's making sure things are happening.
Is it, is it true that when they opened up the hydrant, you told them to send you the bill?
Uh, no.
That's a liar.
We're sending the bill to the fire chief. Oh, well, I do wanna give a big shout out to the fire department for that, though, they were more than willing, as they are every year. Uh, but we had issues with water pressure, um, with how to get the water down in the slide, because it was a little windy, it was a little hot, or, they were right on it, they knew exactly what to do. Uh, they got, the pressure's right, got the mountain hoses out there, uh, very skilled, very, very willing to help, it was a great time, great time by everybody.
Absolutely.
They may have a volunteer fire department, but they're very professional in the way they go by doing their volunteer work.
Absolutely.
Mr. Farmer? Or, you have more?
No.
That's it?
Yes, we're up.
Here we go. I just wanna say, uh, that I, I fully support, uh, option two, the development of the Brewer Townhomes, for the record. I'll probably put my name and my vote there in that effort. I'm looking forward to the construction. And we have a saying, uh, those, those folks of the diving community, you plan to dive, dive to plan, and that's what we're doing. Also, if you wanna be part of the legacy of this community, Schwartz Creek, and get involved, that means attending the planning commission meetings and the DVA. So if you have concerns what's going on in the community, get involved. There was a lot of time and effort put in the last four years of planning this endeavor. So if there's concerns, get involved, get involved with your community, early on, and not in the end stages of a developer. Oh, uh, it was awesome, totally awesome to see the community come together on this fifteenth of July, in the aftermath of the storm. It was incredible to see neighbor helping neighbor, and all the components coming together. I saw three different companies in the aftermath of three companies on our streets, three of them, that I just, I counted alone. The Slip and Slide event on Saturday was great, it was my first time at the event, I had a great time, very, very hot. Other, oh, one, one thing, one issue I'd like to bring up, uh, uh, I believe it was the city owner that laid new carpet in the hallway leading to the library?
Yeah, the common area, definitely would have been there.
Yeah, the common area, the common area.
Yeah, it's just for checking the gage and working on that.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to say that, um, the job is unfinished, and it doesn't really look that great right now, I'm just wondering, uh, especially the kickboards.
Let me check it out.
Okay. Other than that, um, what sort do I have there?
All right, Mr. Farmer?
This weekend was a blast, and that's the design, that was a lot of fun seeing all those kids and adults, families.
And grandmas and grandpas.
And, yeah, and grandmas and grandpas, families racing down this hill and, and having it...
Yeah, yeah.
Having it, uh, organized the way it was, to have a line, and people being directed to go down when it was safe. I, I, I don't think we had the ambulance up, but once, at least the exhaustion.
The girl that...
Yeah.
And that was her walking out, yeah?
So it was, but the smile on these kids' faces, and then seeing them, watching the, watching them get to the bottom, it was cool.
Mr. Hicks, we're the chair of the park board, so...
It was actually Jim Barclay, though, on the park board, it was like he was in charge of it, so we have to make sure we thank him for all his organizational skills. And we actually counted over three hundred and fifty people were there.
Right.
And, uh, we had Formar represented, we had the Firefighters Association, we had Friends of Perkins Library handing out free water. Women's Club was represented there, and we have to thank Walt, he talked to the media, because everybody else, we, how do we put this? We knew what was going on, and Walt didn't, so he said, "Sure, I'll go talk to them." So Walt, and I'm gonna hear about it, he already told me, but, uh, anyway, we did that, it was really fun, it turned out great. Every year we try to improve and make it more safe and that, so I'm looking forward to it next year.
And we had no accidents?
No, no accidents, it really was good. The gate to the cemetery, Schwartz Creek Cemetery, is open, it has been for a while, so I don't know if that's supposed to be that way or not, if somebody should close it up. I got lots of, oh, this speaker event, the Flint River Watershed Coalition is going to be speaking on Wednesday, July thirty-first, at seven PM at the United Methodist Church in Burbank Hall. What is, the discussion is gonna be, what is watershed, what does this mean for you, how does our own Schwartz Creek waterway affect the Flint River? What do we do every day that we are unaware that damages the waterway system, and learn more about the Flint Riverfront restoration. So that's, um, put on by the, it's usually organized by the Schwartz Creek Women's Club, so I'll give this to you as we can...
Yeah, it can be good for a lot of boards and commissioners.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, I'm disappointed that you people wanna ruin that good space over there, because I feel that the taxpayers are getting screwed again. The first time was the police department. We stuck a special mileage on the people, and right after that was done, lo and behold, here comes the metro police. And I'm gonna tell you, I don't care what you say about this, yesterday, there was a motorcycle that went by my house on one wheel. They go down, they, they're going down there all the time. Where's the officers at? I mean, the Schwartz Creek officer wasn't used to sit there every now and then for a little while. And people knew it, and they didn't do that kind of stuff. That's all.
Mr. Pinkston?
I already mentioned how, how pleased I am of how the downtown's looking. The other thing, um, I got a really neat call yesterday from a guy named Jim Atherton. He grew up in a house on the corner of Nicholson Graham Link Road, graduated in the last class at Gaines, which was sixty-one before they consolidated with Schwartz Creek, was a really good childhood friend of Roger Sharp's. Happened to be talking to Roger, and Roger said, "Call me." He's a representative of M West, expanding their sports and recreation entertainment facilities. And he said, "How do you think the city council would be, would they be..." Would they be receptive to turning the racetrack into a year-round sports and entertainment facility with concerts and various things in addition to horse racing, or horse racing didn't go through?" I said, "It's funny you mention that, we tried to buy the racetrack." And they turned us down because we didn't offer enough money, but that was the intent, was to put in a, a year-round facility there, develop it. And I said, "You want to come before the city council? We're meeting tomorrow night." He said, "I'm not really ready for that yet, but it won't be long, and I'll be before you people making a presentation." So I was really encouraged. He's a Schwartz Creek kid, or Gaines. He said he actually grew up close to the Schwartz Creek School, that he did the Gaines.
He graduated from Gaines High School.
Gaines High School in...
His brother graduated from Schwartz Creek.
Huh? He graduated from Gaines High School the last year, and then they consolidated the next year in Schwartz Creek. So, but interesting how, how it comes around and we get involved with a, a local person that's interested in developing the racetrack. He was one of the original promoters for the Grand Funk Railroad.
Oh, really? You have to remember your heritage.
Yeah.
Remembering his roots. Remembering his roots.
Terry Knight in the pack. That's it. I'm done.
Okay.
Your turn.
Um, I too am very happy with how the Slip and Slide turned out, it started out nice last year, got a lot better this year. I have a feeling that this is going to be an event summer, major event in Schwartz Creek and growing people from other communities as well to have some great fun on a hot day in July.
Well, they should get.
Did you from Flint? There's a family from Flint there. There was a family from Watson.
So we're already growing people outside of where they live, because the word of mouth is spreading. So, um, a lot of good things are happening in Schwartz Creek. And looking down the road, I think a lot more good things are going to be happening in Schwartz Creek. I hardly wait till this fall when we have the Oktoberfest going on, uh, four different weekends in October.
Jeepers Creekers.
Yeah, Jeepers.
Creekers. Creekers, I've been correcting many times.
Thank you. I hope all of you will participate in that. So, uh, we're trying to improve our community one step at a time, and always make it better every year than it was last year. And make it the kind of place everybody's going to want to. And every time I have an opportunity to talk to people who are moving to Genesee County and tell them Schwartz Creek is the best place to live in the county. So, uh, come here. And every once in a while, I used to be a pastor, I have a chance to preach in another church, I tell them to come to Schwartz Creek from where they live now. Come here, we got better things happening here than wherever they live. So that said, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
We get time and a half.